The Governor of the State of Glendale Heights has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak and all of the villages of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the June 2nd, 2022 village board meeting is not practical or prudent in light of disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the June 2nd, 2022 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Signed, Chowdhury M.A. Coker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights, dated June 2nd, 2022. I would like to call this village board meeting on Thursday, on Thursday, June 2nd, 2022, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Before we proceed to regular proceedings, I want to talk a little about incident what happened in Uvalde, Texas. On May 24th, 2022, we as a country again experienced a heartbreaking tragedy with the school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. Nineteen kids and two teachers were shot to death. Twenty-one families changed forever. A whole town that will never be the same. As the village president of Glendale Heights, I would like to ask that we all please stand silently for a moment of reflection and respect as we mourn the tragic loss of lives and injuries. Words cannot express the grief our nation is experiencing, but our deepest sympathies go all to the victims, their families, and nation. We now move to applications and communications, community announcement. Dr. Smith, please.
Thank you. The next coffee and chat with the village president board will be this Saturday, June 4th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. The village only allows door-to-door solicitors if they receive a permit from the village. All solicitors receive a background check and they are verified through the police department. If a solicitor comes to your door without a permit or proper identification, or if you have a clear "no solicitors" sign, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Siddiqui?
Republic Services offers free electronic recycling for all Glendale Heights residents. On the second regularly scheduled collection day of each month, Republic Services will collect electronic recyclables with our regular garbage and recycling collections. In order to have an item collected, you will need to contact Republic Services at least 24 hours in advance. Your electronic items should be kept separate from other waste for curbside pickup. For a complete list of acceptable items, please contact Republic Services at (847) On behalf of entire village board, I would like to thank everyone who helped plant flags for the Anvil Memorial Day Ceremony. Approximately 7,000 flags were planted honoring all those we lost in Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom Afghanistan. We would like to give a special thank you to our veterans, Senator Diane Pappas, the Glendale Heights Police Department, village staff, Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights, Builders Club, and our residents for taking time to honor our fallen heroes. We would like also to give a special thank you to John Tarkas of the Community Development Department and Chuck Dombrowski of the Facilities Division, who have helped lead this initiative for close to 15 years. Both John and Chuck are veterans, and we thank them both for their dedication to our country and our community.
Dr. Light, please.
Take your fun, your summer fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs' premier events. Glendale Heights Fest is Wednesday, July 13th through Sunday, July 17th, at Camera Park. Enjoy the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival along with exciting entertainment, rides, and fantastic food booths. Enjoy dazzling displays of fireworks at dusk on Sunday, July 17th. Plan to spend a fun-filled week at Glendale Heights Fest with delicious food and entertainment for the entire family. Be sure to like our Facebook page to stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest, or visit www.glandalehighsfest.com. Advent Health is participating with the village of Glendale Heights to host a free medical clinic on Saturday, June 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The clinic will be held at the Sports Hub and is open to families and children in need of medical care but are unable to afford the cost. Physicians from Advent Health specializing in primary care, pediatrics, physical therapy, and more will be available. This event also have resources for those in the community needing food, housing, transportation, and more. To register, please contact Advent Health at www.adventhealth.com.
Thank you. You're welcome. Dr. Clark Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Marie Tato?
Thank you. Village vehicle stickers for 2022, 2023 are now on sale. The new vehicle stickers must be displayed by 12:01 a.m., July 1st, 2022, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with a B plate are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weight. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. The Glendale Heights Police Department is now accepting applications to become a police officer. Join the Glendale Heights Police Department and make a difference in your community. Applications must be received by 11:00 p.m. on Monday, June 13th. A mandatory orientation meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 15th, at 7:00 p.m. at Marquette Middle School. Additional, a written exam is scheduled for Saturday, June 18th, at 9:00 a.m. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr. Thank you.
Welcome. Dr. Pojek?
Flag Day is celebrated on Tuesday, June 14th, in honor of our red, white, and blue. The following tips for proudly displaying our U.S. flag are recommended by National Flag Day Foundation. Hoist the flag briskly and low it ceremoniously if you display the flag overnight, illuminate it. No other flag or pendant should be placed above or at the same level to the right of the U.S. flag. Don't allow the flag to touch anything beneath it, including the ground, water, or the floor. When your flag fades or wears thin, typically after one year, replace it with a new one. Remember to dispose the worn flags in the village's flag depository located at the circular island in front of the village hall for proper military disposal. For information concerning the flag disposal program, contact me, village trustee Chester Pojek, (630) 909-5310. Now I'm going to read Mary Schroeder, she has laryngitis. Aquatic Center. The GH2O Aquatic Center is open for the season. Stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, membership, and more. Come relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or hang ten on the flow rider. Regular season hours are daily from noon to 6:00 p.m. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. There you go, Mary. You sound good.
Dr. Schroeder?
Red hairs.
Oh, he heard for him, okay. We have the following proclamation. Number one, a proclamation to proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ month. Second, a proclamation to proclaim June 19, 2022 as Juneteenth. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Next, there is none. So next is the police department recognition. Mr. Pappas?
Actually, Trustee Light, do the next one.
I was going to do that one. Walter, if I could, could you please come up to the podium? Myself and the entire board would like to take a moment to congratulate this amazing man and his dedication of 20 years of his life to being a trusted guardian of our children's lives. Rain, sleet, snow, nor blazing sun stopped this man from being at the corner of Fullerton and Bloomingdale Road, helping our kids cross a busy and dangerous intersection on their way to school. I just wanted to say, Walter, thank you for 20 years, 20 years, as a fantastic crossing guard and a trusted friend to many of the kids that you helped throughout the years. And I'm sure they all have great fond memories of you, and like you were just telling me, you never smile at the driver.
No.
You always make sure they understand who's in control. I just, we wanted to present you this plaque. On the plaque, it just simply says, "An appreciation of your dedication to the safety of the children of Glendale Heights through your 20 years of service as a crossing guard." Walter, your name on this.
I just want to add, Walter was also a dedicated member of ESDA for many, many years and donated a lot of hours. Walter, come here. Walter! Donated a lot of hours to the residents, not just crossing guard, but through ESDA. He was around the complex a lot. He had a dedicated civil servant to the village. And on behalf of everybody up here, thank you for all you've done for us. Good luck in giving yourself two hours a day back in your school crossings, but thank you for everything you've done for us. We appreciate all you've done, and God bless and good luck with the rest of everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Today, we're here to promote an officer to the rank of sergeant and a sergeant to the rank of commander. Before I do that, I need to recognize the members of our police department, both retired and active at the police department now. This is why this is the best police department in the state of Illinois, the support that they give for these two that are going to get promoted today. I also need to recognize, need to recognize our police commissioners. I know Kevin Tierney is here today. Our police commissioners put in a ton of hours and time and effort to make sure that we get the best officers at this police department and promoting the best officers to sergeants. Today, we're going to start off with our promotion to the rank of commander. This position will oversee our patrol division, including our proactive problem-solving initiative in conjunction with our community policing efforts. Somebody have Mike Pentecost come forward, please. A little bit about Mike Pentecost. He started with our police department in 2000. Mike has held some distinguished positions throughout his career. He had two assignments as a detective. He was also an investigator for the DuPage County Major Crimes Unit and Merit. He is our department expert on use of force and an instructor for countless other topics. Mike has been a patrol sergeant and he is currently investigation sergeant, where he also coordinates both our Neighborhood Watch Program and our Citizens and Police Academy. Mike is a true leader and a mentor for all of our officers at the department. With Sergeant Pentecost, today we have his wife, Katie, his daughters Samantha and Maddie, his mother-in-law and father-in-law, Janet and Ralph, and I know there's others, I just don't have their names right now. So if I can have both Katie and Samantha and Maddie come up here, and Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you. I didn't do it right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael J. Pentecost.
Oh, they're trying to turn it up. They can't hear me. Surprising. I, Michael J. Pentecost.
I, Michael J. Pentecost.
Having been appointed to the office of commander.
Having been appointed to the office of commander.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
Illinois, in the county of DuPage, Forsyth.
Illinois, in the county of DuPage, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of commander to the best of my ability.
Of the office of commander to the best of my ability. Mike's wife, Katie, is going to be putting his badge on, and his two daughters are going to be putting on the oak leaves on his lapel. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to introduce our new commander, Michael Pentecost. So our second promotion of the ceremony will be the promotion to the rank of sergeant. I'm proud to announce the promotion of Michael Huff to this position. So if Michael and, or Mike and Jackie can come forward, please. And Zoe and Alex and Mikey, can you guys come up here too? Mike is here with his wife, Jackie, his sons, Mikey and Alex, his daughter, Zoe, his mother and father-in-law, Wendy and Chuck, Jackie's grandmother, Sharon, and Brian. Let a backdrop back on a mic. He started with the police department in 2002. Michael has been a detective, a K-9 officer, a field training officer, a certified homicide investigator. As an officer, Mike has received a ton of awards. He's received one lifesaving award, one division meritorious award, and 19 honorable mentions. Mike is a well-rounded officer who brings a ton of knowledge and experience to the rank of sergeant. This is an excellent step forward for our police department and for the village of Glendale Heights. Mike's new badge number is going to be badge number 249. With that said, Clerk Schmidt?
I promise I'll do better this time. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Michael L. Huff, Jr.
I, Michael L. Huff, Jr.
Have, having been appointed to the office of probationary sergeant of police.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary sergeant of police.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, Forsyth.
In the county of DuPage, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office.
Of probationary sergeant of police to the best of my ability.
Of probationary sergeant of police to the best of my abilities. Mike's wife, Jackie, is going to be putting his badge on, and I think Alex and Zoe are going to be putting on the collar pins. Mayor, can we take a recess for pictures, please?
Yes.
And we also have cake in the hallway, too.
Sure.
So, Mayor, you have to actually recess the meeting out, please?
We have to take a walk. Yes. We are breaking for a photo shoot and cake.
Okay.
A recess. A recess.
Give a couple knocks.
Can we get all the police employees up here?
I'm resuming, resuming meeting Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? Yes?
Ed Pope Wayne Avenue. I'm not here to crab for once. I want to give Joanne a compliment. The swamp behind my house is a nightmare, and it's been ongoing for about two or three years, and nobody would respond from the school district. And Joanne stepped in personally. She got them to come out. There are some significant problems with the ditch, with the, with the, what's it actually called, Joanne?
Detention.
Detention pond. She actually invited me out when they came out to the survey and went through with everybody and actually got them facilitated getting something done out there. So I just wanted to give her a pat on the back because it's, it's been, the last two summers, it's been horrific out there with, it just stays swampy and it's, it's just really gross. And they're finally, the school district finally listened and stepped up, and she got, it was all because of her. So I just wanted to give her some public acknowledgement for doing such a great job. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? None? I will proceed. You have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting village administrator, Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. Approval of the regular board meeting minutes of May 19th, 2022. Approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes, May 19th, 2022. Approval of the accounts payable listing of June 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $1,746,542.37. Number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 entitled General Traffic Provisions of Title VII, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois Overweight Permits. Five, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional construction observation services for the Jacobson Avenue Storm Sewer Linings Project. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for professional construction engineering services for the 2022 construction engineering services for the 2022 MFT Street Program. Seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a change order number one final for the 2021 Sidewalk Removal and Replacement Program in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, motion to approve pay request number three final to Schroder and Schroder Incorporated for the 2021 Sidewalk Removal and Replacement Program, total amount not to exceed $6,349.04. Nine, motion to approve pay request number one to J. Congdon Sewer Service Incorporated for the CDBG Glen Hill Drive Water Main Replacement Project Phase Two in a total amount not to exceed $284,455.17. Ten, motion to approve pay request number 12 to Kloss Brothers Incorporated for the Cameron Park Improvement Project, total amount not to exceed $62,762.18. Eleven is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Light.
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Second. Discussion. None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, a motion to.
Okay, can I make a motion to way first reading and number two?
Peter, can we?
Are you talking about the notice of, of award?
Yeah.
It's a resolution. So, it's only, it's first reading. I believe, don't we just pass them on the first time, the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It's not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, yeah. It's gonna be approved anyhow.
It's just, it's a resolution.
Thank you.
We were on roll call vote.
No, we, uh, number one.
Uh, number one. New business. So, there was a discussion, um, motion to conduct and complete an investigation. There was a, uh, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion. It's not specified, you know, what we. Uh, yes, this motion does not specify any subject, you know, or title, what we are doing to do, you know, so this, to me is like very ambiguous.
Did you have a question of anybody or?
I mentioned there, you know, there's, I don't know, you know, what's going, this motion for, I mean.
Are you gonna direct it towards anybody?
Yeah.
Do you wanna ask anybody a question?
Does anybody has question, you know, about this motion? Mr. Flint, can you explain what this?
So, this is a continuation of the topics authorized at the May 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting, position of collector and the cricket contract and other personnel matters that comes up during the course of investigation, whether related or unrelated to whatever you're talking about. So, that was authorized at the COW of May 5th. That investigation was never formalized. It was canceled and the board asked me to reinstate it. So, it's been reinstated. Number two is a, uh, from the executive session last, on compensation of, of certain employees. So, that conversation is continuing.
Okay. So, I need a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Be he have a motion on the floor? Trustee Light.
Roll call vote, discussion is done?
Roll call vote, that's all.
Discussion is done?
No, yes.
Or discussion?
Yes, if anybody else has anything else?
Discussion?
It'll be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to conduct and complete an investigation is approved. Second, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the purchase of one Hyundai electric forklift for use at the wastewater treatment plant. This is Resolution 2022-R-57. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-R-57? Trustee Pat?
So moved.
And trustee, I don't know who's the one, you know, I gave my first one, you know.
Uh, second.
Trustee Light, second. Discussion.
I just have one quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
Rachel, these are good for being around the water, right? I mean, as far as a forklift goes, it won't have any, being, it's electric. I don't know if it's a fail problem with moisture or anything.
No, it's for lifting heavy totes in the treatment plant and heavy equipment, so it won't be near any water.
Cool, it saves it back, that's for sure. Good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes. Resolution 2022-R-57 is approved. We now go on a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? Yes.
Kim Darlin Greenbrier, can someone clarify the motion to conduct and complete an investigation and the cost of this and who's going to be doing this? Doug, are you in charge of this?
No, so this was, what I just said was gonna be investigated?
Well, I remember at the last meeting, what was gonna be investigated was stipends, cricket, the check that was given for cricket, Sohail Bari, maybe there was a host of them. So, are you doing that whole thing all over again?
No, it's limited to what I just said.
Okay, just the, let me put my glasses on.
So, it's limited to position of the collector, the cricket contract, and other personnel matters that come up through the investigation.
Okay, do we have a cost on that and who does that?
Uh, our village attorneys.
It's an outside council who's doing it.
And do we have a cost on that?
No.
That's it?
Yeah.
So, there is no cost?
Whatever the cost to do the investigation is.
On investigation, there is cost, you know.
Yeah.
It will be done by attorney and I talked with Attorney Don last week and he said that this investigation is not leading to any, it has no effect, you know, is ineffective. That's the reason I told him that, please stop it, I don't want to waste, uh, public money for these things which board is on the other side and I'm on the other side, you know.
Right, exactly.
As the only reason I wanted to save money of my resident.
Well, thank you. Somebody's trying to save, save us money. Okay, so we have no cost and do we know when this will be done?
It, it plays itself out, I mean, there's no timeline.
Okay.
Just to do, the time to do a thorough investigation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, let me give a little background of this investigation about collector, you know. Collector position was created in 2011 and from that point up to now, our village clerk has not doing any function in relating to collect, as a collector, you know. This is on the record and she should not have collected this money, she's not entitled for, this is for public money and board is on her side because these people don't like me and they don't like me and in, uh, on the others and they want to hurt, you know, and they are hurting, uh, resident of the Glendale Heights. People, they, they don't want that their money should be wasted, you know. And this is, collector is getting $5,000 every year doing nothing. And cricket stuff, you know, before I came, that was giving, uh, to Sohail Bari, uh, for last twenty years, no other person was permitted to bid for or have equal share or fair share, you know, to come forward and get that contract for twenty, twenty-plus year. And this year, I wanted to go for bid, higher bid, but Sohail Bari's relative, Trustee Siddiqui is here and he fought for that and he got that because board helped him. Now he's laughing, that makes sense, you know. So, there's the reason we are having this, you know, problem. I am on the other side, I want to save a single penny of my resident, period. I want everything contract on merit, jobs on merit. And, uh, jobs on merit, I don't want and that has been passed, you know, into nepotism policy, that elected officials as well as employee, they cannot hire their relatives because their relatives, they create problem, you know. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so where are we at?
We're on, exactly, public, anybody else in the public?
This collector thing, Kim Greenbrier, this collector thing, is this done with malice? Is this just a wording issue that we're dealing with?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Marie, it's just a, it's just a wording problem.
I do sign things, this is required by the county.
Okay.
I sign as collector for the village.
Yes.
Plats of surveys that go to the county, they are filed with them, yes, I do sign them.
Okay.
Joanne brings them up to me, we have someone run them to the county. Yes, we have things with my signature.
Okay, but, and my, my whole thought on this is, there's nothing malice here, these are words. I, I don't understand that.
Except, except when you are objecting to how long things are going, I have, it has been said at this meeting, for everybody on cable to hear, that I have taken money from the village, which I have not and I, I only asked for a public apology and I did not get one and you know.
Exactly.
You were here.
I was.
That's the end of it as far as I was concerned.
And so, we're gonna now have a full-blown investigation on this? Is that what you guys all voted for, a full-blown investigation on that?
Well, is there any other way to stop this? I have a grandson who asked my son, are they really gonna arrest grandma?
Well, I agree.
Would you like that with your grandkids?
I, I would be appalled at the moment.
I am.
And then, so you're saying that this has to go forward to clear your name?
I want my name cleared.
And this will take care of that?
I, hopefully.
Dodry, this is gonna take care of that for us?
I sent her email to have meeting with me, she declined.
Okay, but that's not my point.
I sent her registered letter, she declined.
Yeah, okay.
To me as a collector, uh, the position of a collector, she's not working on that. She is not. She can check dictionary, meaning of that and then who's doing, uh, collection.
And my point is, it's just a wording type of thing, right? Because Marie wouldn't steal money from us.
I, I don't say, you know, I didn't say that, you know, but she's not entitled, you know.
Okay, so this is what's part of that?
Yes.
And then this Sohail Bari thing?
I'm, I'm firm with that, what, these are two things, cricket, going to one person for last twenty, twenty-plus years.
Oh, don't even start me on that, I'm, I'm with you.
And now his relative is here protecting and other, they, these people, they are not working for the village, they are working for their families, you know. I'm against that. I'm for the resident.
And I agree with you.
I go talk with people, they say, what's going on?
And I, and I agree with you on that. I'm more worried about wording with Marie.
Yes.
All she really asked for was an apology.
I'm talking is, is record, you know, what I'm saying, they want to challenge, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Nobody come to my office on these issues, you know, because they don't have issue, they, they are favoritism, you know.
So, Kim.
Kim, before you leave.
So, we've made progress.
Kim, before you leave, the best of my knowledge, all clerks in the state of Illinois are guaranteed, are not guaranteed, they're supposed to be paid $5,000.
Yes.
2010 or 11 of this year, uh, this year.
This, yes.
Uh, this.
Century.
Century.
Century, yes.
The village put in an ordinance to give the clerk $5,000 each year.
Correct.
To the best of my knowledge, every clerk in the state of Illinois is supposed to get this, maybe the attorney can verify this, or Doug.
Doug, is that true? I know she's gotta be underpaid if she's making five grand.
The statute allows the clerk to be the collector as well and be compensated for both, correct?
Okay.
She is collecting two, two paycheck, five thousand for clerk.
But he just said that she's allowed to do that.
Five thousand as a collector.
Right.
But for collector.
So, I'm just saying it's a wording issue here.
There's no, uh, function, you know.
Please just apologize.
Can we, can we, can we, can we move on to, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's move on to another topic because this one is getting kind of old.
Is there any other public, public comment? Then we can move on to the next item, H.
Roll call is done, I believe, right?
No, oh, yeah, we just need to go to H to read the executive session.
We now go.
Excuse me, are we, are we recessing to Cal so we could do executive session afterwards?
That'd be. You wanna take, you wanna?
I have to read this, you know, probably just, yeah, it's done, you know, right?
Do you want, do you wanna go to the COW first, Mayor? Take care of that business and then?
Yes.
Yeah, executive session so we don't keep everybody here?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So, if, we, we can recess this meeting to the COW. You can.
Okay.
He's got that in his script.
Who does he? Make a motion to, to move. Recess to Cal. Make a motion.
Do I recess the COW?
Yes.
Uh, is there a motion to suspend the village board meeting and go to the committee of the whole meeting? Any motion, uh, trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
And trustee Light?
Second. Just, we need a roll call vote. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder? Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
We're in the COW, we're moving on to the COW.
I wish to call this committee at a whole meeting on Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. To order, will the clerk please note who's present?
Noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or, uh, deletions? Pat?
Uh, police department and the finance department.
Mohammed?
Law-abiding citizen.
What is it?
Law-abiding citizen.
Bill Schmidt?
Uh, GHPD up close.
GHPD?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? She can't talk, she can't. Okay. Public comment, is there anyone in the public would like to address this board? Please come up and state your name and address, please.
They don't have to give their address, trust her.
Yeah, I'm Jamie Idialy from James Court.
What, uh, can you spell it?
J.A.I.M.E., last name Idi, Y.A.L.Y.
Idi?
Y.A. L.Y.
Gotcha, thank you.
A few things, uh, the first question.
You have, first of all, you have five minutes to speak, so.
Okay, first question is, um, about the survey that was conducted by NIU. I went to NIU, I think they do good work, I studied their accounting. I was hoping if there's any way to put the survey on the website, you guys were talking about putting the stipends on the website, how about the survey? I think that'd be very helpful. Anybody who wants to do a survey can do it.
Doug, can you answer that?
Well, we had the, uh, the survey director from NIU at one of our last meetings, they have a randomized sample that they're sending the survey out to, uh, it's all done mathematically, randomized throughout the village. The results of the survey will be on the website, but the actual survey itself is done mathematically and randomized throughout the village.
and randomized throughout the village.
Fair enough, but maybe in the future, to increase your sample size, you know, get more of a representative of the population.
We're counting on NIU's prof- uh, professionalism and expertise in this to tell us the right way to do it.
Understood. Uh, so, James Court, it was in the, the news recently. I'm basically here to ask if it's, and last year as well, there was, two kids were fighting. Is there a possibility, maybe put a camera on James and maybe behind, we share the property with the commercial, the bowling alley? Just a thought, it's, it's coming, it's coming up in the news. You know, there's been things happening. If that's a possibility, a discussion you guys could have.
Keith, would you take that, please?
What, what kind of camera you looking for, just?
I don't know.
The problem with the twenty-four hour surveillance is that you have to have somebody watch it, okay? We can look at, we, we strategically put flat cameras, we can actually look and put them on James too. The difficult part that we looked at, Cambria, your section over there, there are so many ins and outs. So in order to encapsulate that whole area, you have to hit everything. And a lot of, like, going on Sydney comes off of Glen Allen, it can come off of the Bloomingdale's side, it can also come off the streets, there are veins that come off the countryside. So that's something we have to do in our second phase of the flat cameras. They're being, seem to be beneficial right now in the places that they're put at, so in the second phase, that's a good possibility we could try to put them there.
Okay, thank you. Also regarding James, uh, I'd like to thank Joanne, Doug, and the mayor. We had an issue there where someone's parking, it's very tight parking for those who know. Uh, a gentleman with a disabled son, when they repaved the lot, they took some of his space. Right now we got a double wide, where you park two cars. They took some of his space and gave it to the neighbor. So the guy couldn't get his disabled son in a wheelchair out of the wheelchair van. It looks like it's, thank you, Joanne was, uh?
It should be paved, I believe tomorrow and Saturday is my understanding.
Yes. I'd like to thank you guys for that, that's very helpful for him. Uh, but I'll con-
Just make sure it's re-stripped correctly.
Yes.
Yeah, are you guys coming out though, to double-check that?
We will, sorry.
He called me.
Uh, we, we will come out tomorrow, and I did meet with Roxanna, the HOA president, and drew it out for her again, uh, today, so, uh, we're, we're hoping, it's pretty straightforward, but we'll, we'll stop by.
Appreciate it. Um, again, though, I'll go back, this is an HOA issue. So I just want to reiterate, for the last fifteen years, there's been no meetings from the HOA. I asked a question before, can the village give me something to work with? Uh, the community, the Illinois Community Interest Act, I guess this is for the attorney. Uh, the Interest Act says annually there should be financial statements provided by the HOA. I've been here two years, I've talked to neighbors, they've been there twelve years. I think for at least fifteen years, there hasn't been anything.
I thought there was an association in your neighborhood on James Court.
Absolutely.
There is.
In name.
Do you contact them?
If they, uh, I try, they don't respond, I, I've been there two years, the other neighbor's been there twelve years.
Well, there should be a president and a vice president, trust and, and treasurer.
Absolutely, and there should be financial statements as well.
I don't think anybody.
That's up to you guys, I'm thinking.
That's the Illinois law, I'm, I'm asking if there's any way the village, give me something. So, the law requires an actual, a, a financial statement, I asked a question before, maybe it's not gonna fly, but why, tell me why it won't, to the attorney. If, can the, can the village have an ordinance where the HOAs of Glendale Heights are required to submit financial statements as required by Illinois law? I'm not asking for you guys to audit, I can do an audit.
It's the law, I mean.
Can you require the collection of?
They're, they're not for profit, so they don't need to disclose that to us. That's between them and the Attorney General's Office, the Illinois Secretary of State.
So they don't need to, but can you make an ordinance that requires them to?
They're required to, under state law.
And can, can the Glendale?
So that'd be a private action, uh, between the associate, association members in the association.
But what precludes Glendale Heights from requesting that information?
Because we have no jurisdiction over homeowners associations, and that aspect of how they're run and their financial status.
Okay, is there anything else you can do? The reason, if you go to the Facebook post regarding what happened.
Try contacting the Attorney General's Office.
I feel like I won't get anywhere.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna get anywhere with the village, because there's no power that we have over them.
So the term on the Facebook that was used, somebody else was ghetto. This is the correct term, the sidewalks are cra- maybe something else can you guys, to the HOA, can you give, hey, your sidewalks are busted up?
Young man, I'm a, a president of our association, give me your phone number, and I will have somebody contact you.
Chester, we'll, we'll give it to you, we have it.
Okay, you have it, all right, give it to me.
We'll give it to you. Yeah, and we, the village feels for your situation, but it's more of a civil in nature.
The last thing I'll say about it is, uh, this is, you know, it's a neighborhood in DuPage County, it shouldn't look like Inglewood or South, whatever you want to say. The sidewalk shouldn't be broken up, you know, the fences shouldn't be leaning over. They have money, every time, when I bought mine, the previous owner didn't pay for three, four years. So for my, at the closing, they got thirty-two, thirty-three hundred bucks.
All right, excuse me, your five minutes is up, thank you, sir, anybody else?
Let me.
Jamie, we'll, Jamie, we'll follow up with you.
Hey, maybe he wants to say something.
You seem like a good, a good leader, sir.
This is for the public, Mayor.
I want to answer that, you know.
I'll get the phone number from Doug.
I, no, there are a lot of stuff, you know, information, I want to provide him.
He wants to say something, let the mayor, let the mayor speak.
Oh, of course.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Jamie, number one, you talk about, you know, survey on website, you know. We will consider, I will put, uh, this on agenda in next meeting, board meeting. Number two, parking handicap, you know, we are working on that. And Ms. Joanne, and we are talking with their president, and she's going to, uh, for re-stripping, you know, that handicap, you know. And, uh, other, there are some criminal activities, those have been, uh, increased recently. And I talked with my chief, Mr. Pappas, police chief, and we are going to have meeting at James Court in, uh, near future. So that's, we are taking steps, you know, we want our resident, uh, secure, have full confidence, and we are going to provide security. Whatever we will, uh, do over there, we will keep posted, you know, day, time of the meeting. And we will invite residents, so we will talk, you know. Mr. Chief, do you want to add something?
No, that's correct, so we'll be doing neighborhood watch meetings, and we'll move on around. We usually, uh, because of COVID, we only had our neighborhood watch meetings here. We're gonna move them back around to different areas, so your area is one of our number one, uh, areas that we want to hit.
Thank you, chief. Okay, anybody else, public comment? Come up to the podium, state your name, please.
Thank you, Chester. Hi, George.
Uh, my name is, uh, Tika King, T.I.C.A. King. And, uh, you know, I really, uh, I, this is a very dedicated crew, I would tell you.
Ma'am, talk to the board, okay? Not to the audience, talk to us, so we can answer you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Um, yes, uh, I want to talk to all of you, I think you're great. I think, you know, in a lot of ways, you serve, um, you know, all of you, uh, St. Patrick's Day, you know? And, uh, I respect that, I came to the Police Commissioners Meeting, and I'm, I'm very impressed that we have such a great, truly, you know, impressive, uh, police force. And I think it's a shame that, uh, you're so unsupported by so many. You know, not, I mean, all across the country, I think many people are aware of that. That, uh, it's not as Biden was talking about. I, I think mental illness is a, is a factor, but of course we have a mentally, uh, challenged president, President Biden. And he talked about guns.
Ma'am, kick this to the public with, to our, uh, village, okay? We're not talking about Brett Biden or anybody else, no.
Well, may you may not be, sir, but I have freedom of speech.
I know you have freedom of speech.
I'm defending that right at this moment.
Ms. Ms. King, if, if I can correct you, public discussion is only for business that is relevant to the Village of Glendale Heights. So please keep your comments, the, the chair is correct.
Okay, let, let's say.
Restricted to.
Thank you, you're taking up my time, sir, please.
I'll give you your time back.
Thank you.
Talk faster, so we can get out of here too, okay? We have another big meeting to conduct, conduct.
Oh, yeah, Mohammed, ooh, I pray for you too. Um, anyway, um, so, okay, let's take baby formula, okay? Have you, are you familiar with the crisis in Glendale Heights with the mothers who can't get baby formula? Are you doing anything about that? That's a top priority. Lot of babies dying right now. Any answers? Come on, any answers? What do you say, President Coker?
What does that got to do with the village now, ma'am? Come on, we can do.
Dying babies?
Ma'am, timeout, we don't supply the, the grocery stores, that comes from.
Yes, you do. Doug knows.
Oh, my.
You're preparing. No, honestly, you're very disrespectful at times.
I am disrespectful.
You are, and you.
Um, I am not changing either.
I am not either.
Then we're gonna have a Mexican standoff.
We get back on track?
All right, can we, uh, can we get back on track?
I don't know, the way you guys behave sometimes, you're so damn manipulative. You're just like the friggin' rest of the government in a lot of ways. Control, power, I saw the economic meeting, that's your priority. Money and, uh, control. I didn't hear anything about the people. So really, the citizens have to stand up. The citizens have to come to the, not necessarily this meeting, primarily them bullshitting. The police coffee on Saturday, first Saturday, is one where you can speak your mind a little bit, you know, and they listen more, and they don't dance around so much. The Police Commissioner meeting is educational, very informative. In fact, getting back to the gun issue, our, our good police chief, George Pappas, stood up for the AR-15 as a smart gun, because really, the American people, the citizens of all of our towns should support the police and be prepared to defend themselves. You know? I turn on my blue lights.
All right, Tiki, your time, five minutes is up, I appreciate you coming to the podium, thank you.
I'm sure you do, I'm sure you do.
Thank you, very much, anybody else?
Anybody else have any questions for me?
Mr. Pope, please, come up.
Uh, yes, wouldn't, well, he needs help. I'm sorry.
She's a fucking idiot.
And on a lighter note, okay, I just, I think this thing's dead, but, um, Keith, I was gonna ask, um, I was gonna ask you privately, but because it was a big blow-up on the Glendale Heights page for Facebook, I figured maybe it'd just be better to do it here. Um, the Camera Park with, uh, you got an update for the opening of the water park? There were some pretty nasty comments, and, and, you know, construction's construction, I'm not trying to be rude, but I thought, you know, I put something nice up there and I got shredded, so I thought maybe you could just give us an update?
Well, I'm glad that you said that, because I was trying to figure out why I was getting phone calls, I didn't know what they were coming from, so.
Yeah, it was on Facebook.
Just to kind of update everybody on Camera Park, unfortunately, we were hoping to be open by the end of May, um, but due to some construction issues that came about, mostly due to some comm ed issues and power, um, we are delayed. Um, those issues were taken care of about a week ago. Um, I'm happy to say that over the last couple of weeks, we've really made some good progress on the park. Uh, we probably have two or three more weeks of work to do before we're finished. And then the hope is that we'll have the park open sometime in the month of June. Uh, we'll do a grand opening, the plan is to do the grand opening on the opening of Fest.
Oh, that'd be, that would be great, because, uh, you know, Facebook has a lot of cowards on it, they can, uh, they can bash you all they want on there because you're not there, but I thought this would be a good forum, could be a good forum for you to at least, you know, let people know, because, uh, I don't know, Facebook people can be pretty ugly.
It's actually an exciting time, because we're actually getting to the point where we're at a punch list to get, I mean, we're at the end stage, we're finally at the end stage, so.
I drove by it the other day, it looks beautiful, so.
I'm ex, I know that I'm excited to share it with the board and the residents, to see what we've been able to do.
All right, thanks, Keith.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Don Need Administrator, recommendation to approve a variation from Chapter eleven, Section eleven dash six dash eleven D dot four A, to allow an increase to the maximum number of wall signs from one to six on a variation from Chapter eleven, Section eleven dash six dash eleven, dot D four B, to allow an increase to the maximum wall sign from one eighty-two point twelve to two forty-six point two four square feet, uh, for the property located at one fifty-seven East and North Avenue for Northern Tool. Joanne, can you hand, oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to just move this to a board with a recommendation to concur?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Joanne, can you expand on this?
Certainly, uh, this is for Northern Tools, uh, that they are going to be moving into the Concord Green Shopping Center. They have requested variances to the signage regulations, uh, and I believe that to be, uh, to meet the criteria hardship due to the distance from North Avenue to the building. They also have, um, as part of their contract with the different tool manufacturers, they're required to have signage for steel, Makita, the, the various, uh, uh, tool manufacturers need to be displayed. So I do believe that that conforms with the criteria.
Okay, sure.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an application for amendment, amendment to conditional use ordinance two thousand eighteen dash forty-two, to allow a change to the entitled ownership of the existing Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak, uh, Steak Burger located at five five six East North Avenue. Is there a motion? Trustee Schmidt?
Move that, we move that to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second. Discussion. Nobody? Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
All right, the next one is, uh, motion passes. Uh, recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow a cannabis infusing facility in and I industrial district for Seven Leaves LLC, located at six hundred Wall Street. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Profits to lower property taxes.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
All right, thank you, the motion passes. Uh, enterprise leasing, replacement of Public Works Units five seven five and six five three. Doug, would you take that, please?
Yeah, so, uh, this is just more to notify the board that, uh, Public Works Units five seventy-five and six fifty-three were budgeted under the, uh, budget currently for outright purchase. Uh, because of supply chain issues and because of a whole bunch of different issues, uh, we're moving these two vehicles to the enterprise leasing purchase agreement. One, it'll save us a lot of money, but most importantly, uh, Chevy opened up their, uh, bids for one day last week. Usually we have two months to purchase vehicles through bids. Chevrolet opened up their, uh, fleet dealers for municipalities for one day last Thursday. We had to make, I had to kind of make a command decision to, to do this, because we only had one day to do it. Uh, so we, we're moving those two vehicles to that fleet, so we can get the vehicles significantly earlier. And we're saving money along with the other fleet program that we have. And these are, uh, gonna be Chevy Silverado two, twenty-five hundreds, right, with plows and with lift gates. So we're saving significant money, uh, over the course of it, and we're gonna be able to get these vehicles, they were ordered last Thursday. So we'll be able to have these vehicles much sooner than, uh, our traditional Fords, which aren't gonna open up till the fall. So, uh, we're in that supply chain crunch, so I just wanted to notify the board of this change in how we're gonna purchase these two vehicles.
When will they come?
Oh, heck, I don't know.
You don't know yet, huh?
We got the order in, that was a, getting the order in was half the battle. We got the order in. That was a, getting the order in was half the battle.
I thought they'd give you an approximate date or something.
Once we get into the, the line, and once we get into the computer system, then we'll know. But, uh, we, we're lucky enough to get the vehicles ordered.
All right, Trustee Schmidt?
Are the, uh, Fleets Department gonna require any special training in order to service these vehicles? Or will that be taken care of by the leasing company?
No, no, no. So this is all, our, our fleet mechanics handle all this, right? So this is no different than the police squad cars, no different than the other vehicles that we've purchased. Their, uh, Chevy Silverado 2500s are made for plowing. Uh, our Fleets manager actually, when I gave him the options of what we could buy, uh, suggested that we buy these instead of the other options that were out there, 'cause he's a Chevy guy, I assume. And the parts are there, plus we have a dealer in town that if something under warranty, it can go right there for warranty. So, um, hopefully, we can get these vehicles much quicker than if we were ordering the other vehicles that we, the Fords that we normally order.
Anybody else? So what are you looking for? Just an okay to?
I was actually, um, I had it on there for, for kind of an approval, but since we had to place this order last week, uh, I'm kind of just telling you, we did it.
I think you did a great job.
Good job.
Thanks, Doug. Watch it out.
All right, the next item, village ordinance regarding elected official stipends. That's you again, Doug.
So on your desk, uh, I met with, our committee met, uh, yesterday and late this evening, this afternoon. And on your desk, uh, there should be a, uh, memorandum from myself, Chief Pappas, Trustee Schroder, Trustee Pojek. We've all signed it. We've, uh, came to an agreement on the new stipend sheets. Uh, we've, uh, combined a couple of different documents that were out there into one document. There should be no confusion as we move forward on what is allowed as a stipend and what is paid as an annual, uh, part of your payment for, uh, the annual compensation. So, uh, you have that. We'll bring it back next board meeting after you've had a chance to review it. And then we'll be able to bring that into some kind of codification with the attorneys and get your feedback from the document that we, you have, that you have on your desk today.
So we are gonna discuss later on, like in the next board meeting, correct?
Yeah, yes, we could.
Okay, are we doing anything for those stipends which you found are not correct, just like, uh, Trustee Schmidt return, refund the?
Yeah, we haven't had the opportunity to audit everything yet, back a year. We'll continue to work on that audit and we'll bring back a report on that audit. Uh, the, the biggest change in, uh, this procedure is, uh, village administration will have oversight of the stipend process and will approve all, ev, all the paperwork that goes through it. So we'll, we'll be, we'll look at, uh, whether something should or shouldn't be approved. And we'll have a conversation with an elected official if it's not.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to bring up on that, make sure when they fill out the stipend, they put a description. Not just put a name, you have to put a description of what transpired for that meeting, particular meeting. Okay, all right, anybody else? No? Okay, Pat, you're next.
Uh, yeah, Chief. I, I see Mr. Somerville out, out here. Uh, I know we have no control over the schools. But what, what is their plan for something like happened?
Pat, we are really advanced in our training, and even when Mike was here as an officer, we always worked with our school districts for the drills. We, we actually do, uh, random checks, make sure their doors are all secure. Our school districts, things happen down in Texas that probably shouldn't have happened, and we're not gonna get into that. But we have protocols that we follow, not just the police department, not just the village, but the schools themselves. And part of those rules are what they practice with the kids, your lockdowns, uh, emergency drills with, um, you know, intruders, uh, intruders on the outside. For instance, if we had an incident in a neighborhood, we had, contact our SROs, our XROs, contact the school, they put automatic lockdown. The police department ourselves, every, uh, school, both districts have cameras inside there. All of our sergeants' cars, two sergeants' cars have access to those video cameras. So we can monitor the school hallways, inside the hallways, not just outside, inside and outside, in particular for every school that's out there. So we have a lot of advancements. I'm not saying that we're better than Texas, but we do a lot of good things here. Uh, we do a lot of practice with the, not only with just the police department and the schools, we actually practice with our fire departments and, and different drills. If there's an emergency situation where we had to rescue missions too.
Okay.
And also, Trustee Maritato, the, the schools here are locked down. They're hardened, right? You can't get into our grade schools or middle schools without somebody at the front desk buzzing you in, right? That they see you on camera. So we don't have, there's no open campuses, Mike, right?
There's no open campuses.
So none of the campuses are open. They're all on lockdown regardless, right? The, there's only one way in and one way out of every school that is in the village, right? Both districts are on it. Both districts have agreed to, what's the?
Alice Training?
Alice Training. Both school districts have agreed to Alice Training, which is a nationwide training program, run, hide, fight type program. Uh, they are, um, they, they practice it, our, our police department trains every year in the schools. We've taken, uh, and George was a big part of it. Six, seven years ago, we started with our active shooter training inside the schools. And our, every, every teacher has gone through active shooter training. And every school administrator's gone through active shooter training. And we've actually done live fire training, uh, with blanks and with semunitions, with the teachers, no kids, with the teachers for five, six years. And we've, we've literally witnessed the teachers go from, uh, being very, very afraid to being very proactive in the defense of the kids in their classroom. And that training has made a big difference for, for the school districts, I think, Mike?
Yes.
And the, and the teachers and, um, just their preparedness. You know, many teachers never heard of gunshot before. With the training that we've done, now they understand what a gunshot sounds like. They understand this, they, they smell gunpowder. They know what that smells like. So we put them all through that training. Uh, Illinois has got, you know, these, these laws in place about lockdowns. High school campuses are open, right? But our grade school, middle school campuses are locked down, one way in, one way out, the entire school day.
Well, in actuality, the high schools are locked down, because they have, they have, uh, security coming into building in one door to come in, 'cause that's what was my duty for my, for six of my years, yeah.
Eighty-seven might be, but-
Eighty-seven, yeah.
Forty-six isn't.
I, I can only, I only talk about, uh, District 16 and 87, so I mean, which I was a part of it. And, uh, speaking with our superintendent, who happens to be a Marine, and he is very gunghole on keeping our schools safe and ensuring that the safety of our kids are there all the time. So I mean, we have, we have policies, we have procedures, we have rules, and, uh, the superintendent sets out in the beginning of the year, talks about these procedures. Uh, we're not about to put it on the website to let everybody know what, what everything's done. But in actuality, uh, District 16, and I'm sure District 15, 'cause I'm, you know, you know, been there, uh, is well secured and takes everything seriously. And the teachers are well trained, like Doug said, and, uh, you know.
And mo, and both school districts, both school districts, through all of the training they've done with the police department and the, uh, honestly, the, the, uh, documents they've signed and trained with have empowered their teachers to do what's in the best interest of the kids, right? So sometimes the best interest of the kid is hiding. Sometimes it's fleeing. If you have an outside door that's right next to you and you can get out of the school, or somebody inside the school, you get out, right? And they've also given, the, both school districts have given teachers permission to fight if it happens to, somebody comes in your classroom.
Yeah.
Right? So that's an important part of, of the plan, is to give the teachers the empowerment to do what's in the best interest of the kid.
Let me, let me ask you a question. If, if just based on crazy.
Okay.
But it's coming from me. Why, why can't we have a system in the schools, like the fire department? If there's a fire, they hit the switch and it goes right to the fire department.
We have that already.
With the police department.
Both school district has that. Uh, I won't give, because I'm not gonna tell, give you the secrets, but we do have that.
There's things that we can't talk about. We don't wanna talk in the public.
Oh, okay. And, uh, but I'm telling you that, uh, Chief Pappas knows, I mean, being a former SRO and everything. Uh, we got that covered.
Okay.
And also, don't forget that we have three SROs. We have three school resources. One in each school district, that's assigned to the middle schools, and one that rotates through the high schools, right? So the village is committed, the police department's committed, to the safety of kids. And the school districts are committed, 'cause honestly, they're paying for our SROs, right? For 50% of one and 100% of the other. So we're, um, our kids are as, as safe as we can make them with the lockdown procedures they have, the school security system they have, the training that we do. And we've dedicated one police officer to each middle school.
And those SROs have specialty equipments that they have that we're not gonna discuss either.
Okay, good.
Trustee, uh, Schmidt?
A couple of years ago, I volunteered to be a, uh, an actor in a, uh, school drill situation down in Hadley. And they ran about, I don't know, six or eight different scenarios there. And I can tell you that the, there were, uh, I know Glen Ellen Police, I think Wheaton and College of DuPage all were cross-training there. And they ran smoothly. And they set up different scenarios, uh, different, uh, classrooms that they were, uh, you know, uh, offender was holed up in different, uh, means of, uh, accessing them. And they trained, and after each scenario, they critiqued what went right, what went wrong. So there is definitely training taking place, and if, uh, the police departments I observed were as good as they were, I'm confident our police department is better.
It, it's a little learning experience. Everything that we see that went going on with other, other events that happened, our administration and our teachers and our police officers discuss it. I mean, they have roll call training, they have actual things and say, okay, this is what may have gone wrong. And we actually talk about it and we bring it up.
By statute, annually, annually, we have to meet at the beginning of the school year to restructure, see if there's anything we have to change. So that's what we do, and we figure out, we tweak everything. That's where we add the camera system. You add little things here and there just to make sure that we are secure.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Light?
Thank you, Chester. Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry.
First of all, thanks. You do a great job over there. I mean, fantastic with the schools. Um, my question for you is, do, addressing the, the mental health end of this, do we talk about see something, say something with the kids? Do we address that?
I can tell you, um, from knowledge that, again, cannot discuss what, what, what happened, but, um, some of our events were triggered by the students coming up and telling a staff member.
Fantastic. That's what I wanna hear, 'cause it, it's, it's something that doesn't get discussed a lot.
Chief Pappas can, you know, he sees, it's a-
He sees the reports more than, you know, I do, 'cause it's been eight years. But again, uh, he can attest to that.
Since, uh, Glen Side is juveniles, we're not gonna talk about that. But they do, they, uh, they do that very good job there.
Okay, that's, I was just curious about a lot of that stuff, if it was practice, that's all.
Yep.
Mr. Siddiqui?
Yeah, how many drill practices do we do in a year? Do you know that? Or can you disclose that, or if it's something which?
So each school does their own separate one, and then we have a major event where we would, uh, the district that, Queen B School District, the superintendent there wants his, uh, staff on high priority and alert all the time. So we will have unannounced ones too, where we can go to any one of the schools, and they expect that they are up to standards and above standards. So when we do our drills, that's what they expect. And the teachers are excellent. You know, it's not like the old days where doors are left open, no doors are ever left open. They're always, um, closed. If somebody comes knocking on the door, they will not let them in. They all have intercom systems where they have to communicate. They will not let somebody in unless they can truly identify who they are and they have a purpose to be there.
Yeah, it's really crazy that we are talking about schools. It seems like we are discussing a, a battleground, but I think maybe it's, this is what the new world is about. So it's, it's really crazy that we have to discuss and go through all, all these factors.
You know, it's good, we have a great community here, and everybody, just like Trustee Light said, not only the kids do that, but so do the parents, the adults. If they see something, then they call us, and that's what we want. We wanna make sure that there's any suspicion, if they're normal, we just say, okay, it's okay, but it's good to check things out, right?
It's also the whole point of the SRO program is not just there for protection, they're there to engage the kids and to build relationships with the most at-risk part of our community. And as a, they're not there in a law enforcement role, they're there as a mentor, advisor, build relationship role within the grade schools. And our SROs are a wealth of information, as both you guys know, in developing that relationship. And they have kids coming up to them all the time, just talking about whatever's going on, so. That's, that's like the biggest role of our SRO program and the reason we're so committed to it. It's not about law enforcement being in the school. I mean, the presence of law enforcement is important. But it's about that building a relationship with the kids and the parents at meetings and the teachers and the principals. That's the important part of, of the police being in schools. Not about anything else.
I can tell you, for after retiring for eight years, uh, people still come up to me. Uh, still live in the town, uh, they still, and I'm like, hi, Officer Somerville, do you remember me? Well, you know, they're in fourth grade or third grade, and now they're 22 years old, they're 21 years old, and I'm going, yeah, you look familiar, but they still remember what we do. And, uh, it's a good program.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I?
I have one question.
One more saying, I just wanna say that, uh, we, I just came from graduation over there, and I wanna thank Keith, Doug, George, on an excellent job, even the board, that you did an excellent job in providing us uh, an opportunity to keep our kids in the village. So thank you for that.
Right.
So if you don't know what he was referring to, real quickly, sorry, Trustee. Uh, Superintendent Williams came to us a couple of months ago and said, hey, our graduations, uh, we don't have the space for a graduation. Our graduations are taking place i, at Glenbar North or Glenbar West, at some outside district and outside of the town, and they really wanna have a graduation inside the town. So, uh, we got, together with the sports hub and Keith, and they figured out how to get 600 people into a gym and have a graduation, so all the kids can come to the Village Hall Sports Hub and have their graduation in Glendale Heights, not outside the town somewhere.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much, Chad.
Chief, I have one question for you before we get, switch over to Pat. I haven't heard of any company asking for Alice Training. Is that died down or what?
No, they still request, ask for it. Um, it, it comes up sporadically, but we'll get emails, phone calls, and then we'll have one of our trained officers go out to those businesses and they'll do that training for them.
No, 'cause I haven't heard anything. I know I was in one of them at M-Wave, they wanted Alice Training and I-
It comes around every, I'm sure we got calls after Uvalde and everything else.
Yeah, we do have a half dozen to a dozen a year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Uh, Pat?
Uh, Bill, question for you. If we have extra money in our general fund, could we take some of that money out and invest it to draw back interest on that money?
We would take any surplus or idle funds, that we would call them, and invest them according to our investment policy. So we recently had a checkup conversation with Fifth Third Bank, they're the village's disbursement bank. And they encouraged us to revisit our investment policy and work on our cash flow analysis. There's a couple, many things have changed over the years with the pandemic and such. And we're going to refresh our investment policy. We'll bring that back to the board as an amendment. And it has parameters in there and how much we can invest and what we can invest in.
Good, good.
Bring that back.
Good, thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Siddiqui, law-abiding citizens.
Oh. Um, I want to address one issue. Uh, Mr., uh, Trustee Light, I have observed, it's on the record, that you are coming on, uh, Ms. Rachel, Director of Public Works. You are targeting her, her.
Wait, excuse me, mayor.
And you are pinpointing her.
Mayor! And, and- Excuse me. We got, we're, we're conducting this. Mr. Siddiqui, uh, uh, Mr., uh-
Give permission, listen, you gave me permission, you can stop me, you know.
I can stop you.
No, no, you cannot. You can't, because it's coming on, you know, trustees, and you guys are giving hard time to me.
We're talking about a certain app.
Yes, I am talking about, you mentioned about-
Also, this is, this is-
And this is very common stuff, you know.
That is not a topic for open meeting.
Right.
That's a topic for executive session, if you wanna talk about that, please.
No, this is, trustee is involved, so it should be, people should know what's going on.
I would ask, I would ask you to confer with our village attorney.
People should know, you know, what's going on. Trustee Light, he's coming and he's giving hard time to our director.
Peter, what, what do you suggest we do?
Well, the only thing I, I, I would, I would say is it's not the item that's next on the agenda.
Right.
Um, and it, that's not a discussion item that was added.
No, it's a common, it's, uh, COW, you know.
No, I, I, I understand it, but-
Anything, anything we can discuss, you know. Anything, anything we can discuss, you know.
Mayor, was not added as, as an item?
No, I, it's other, you know, other means.
I would say that you could add it as an item.
Yeah, this is what I said, you know.
Well, I'm adding it as an item. It's more, it's more common to address that, those kind of issues in executive session, but there's no requirement to address it in executive session, so. But it's just not an item that's next. The next one would be number six. So if you wanted, if they allowed you to add it as an item for this meeting?
Yes.
You could add it.
Yes.
But we are on number six, so that's only.
Or on a different subject right now. If you want to talk, you can talk executive session, if not, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I'm not going.
Listen, mayor, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
I am not going to address in executive session, I have addressed already. If Mr. Light wants to answer, yes, he can. I, as a, as a president, I don't allow any elected official or any employee to yell or to intimidate.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to executive session.
We need a roll call.
Thank you. We need a roll call. Roll call vote.
Okay, who, motion to adjourn was made by?
This is ridiculous with that mayor.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Who seconded? Trustee Light?
Light. Yep.
Was there a?
Trustee Meritato?
You know, I gotta say something before.
Yes or no?
Before.
Give a motion on the floor.
Yes or no?
I'm going to say something.
No.
Give a motion on the floor. You have to.
We're adjourning. Yes or no?
Abstain.
Good. Yes.
Yes. Can I call you first?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.